All right, well now call the city council regular meeting to order for June thirteenth. Please address the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this evening.
Lord, we just ask that your will be done tonight, Father. We ask that you grant us wisdom tonight, Lord. Our wish is that you protect each and every person in this town, each and every person in this state. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Madam Clerk, feel please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire here. Councilmember McCure.
Yeah.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a call.
All right. First up, we have the minutes. This will be from minutes from May twenty-third, city council regular meeting, and May twenty-sixth, city council special meeting. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve of minutes on the C four, May twenty-third and May twenty-sixth.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any questions or changes? Seeing none, we will call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. I'm number five, we have the first reading of ordinance number zero-nine dash twenty-twenty-two. It's a solid waste. Jerry, if you'd like to brief us on this. Thank you. Does staff want to talk about this, or is Jerry?
Mayor, if it's all right with you, before we start, I had Randy go around and take some pictures of kind of what we're talking about, slaying out care that we're picking up on like a daily basis.
Okay.
David. Yeah.
Yeah. I don't have the actual picture.
Randy, you want to narrate stuff?
That, that's really not remarkable, other than the fact that that shows when you're looking at the tires, that's just one location with four tires on just one day. The other ones will be a little bit more apparent issues. It's another south side, just off of Main Street, that actually is two piles for one residence. As you can see, the residence where the cans are, there's a large amount of debris on each side, most of it being tree debris, but there's other stuff combing over there. Another issue that's, well, I, um, some of the stuff that's placed out there, and what you can't see is it's, there's like three piles that continue to the west on that picture. That's North Lake Avenue. I don't know where that came from, but that's tree debris, it's, but it's since been picked up. But that's down there by the, um, the store on North Lake is before you get to the truck route. Uh, believe that's, that's, and again, all these pictures were last couple of days. That's over there off of Dome. Um, again, it kind of shows you some of the issues that solid waste has with the combing land of debris, you have yard waste, you have bulk waste, and then you have some construction debris to the left, we can't see is rolled up carpet. That's across the street from that last picture, that's also on Dome. Obviously, that's a, uh, C and D material up against the fence, which caused the huge issue. Um, as you see that fence behind there, that's impossible for the clam truck to come in there and grab that debris without taking the fence with it. Not to mention how much it is, that, that, that right there should have been in a roll-off dumpster and taken to the landfill by the owner of that property, shouldn't be the city's responsibility. Just more bulk waste. And again, those pictures really don't do it justice, because right now you're looking at two cubic yards, what should be picked up, and that's way more than that. Again, combing land issue with, uh, should be picking up yard waste or yard debris separate from regular bulk waste, and you see the obvious issue there. That's a real nice one, that, that's off of Walnut Street by Memorial. That was a cleanout, that, uh, apparently there was an eviction, and I guess instead of a roll-off dumpster, they just decided to throw it all out to the street, city ended up picking it up. Pretty egregious. Leo Jefferson, another place, another eviction from a house. That's just one of three piles from that same house. There's another pile, same house, across the street, over by Mr. Wilson's property, all on the right of way. Third pile, same house, Leo Jefferson. Uh, forgive me, I don't recall where that one was, but again, just, it, it goes, I mean, again, the, the picture doesn't do it justice, that's probably twenty feet long.
Yeah.
Another location, uh, believe it or not, that's the same house as that first atrocity came from, that's the second round of, uh, cleanout from that house at Walnut and Memorial.
So in summation, what you're basically saying is that people are putting out way too much, uh, yard waste trees, uh, people are actually taking rentals whenever they evict persons in there, just taking everything, throwing it out by the road.
At the city's expense.
As well as doing complete remodels and putting every bit of it out by the road. So what this is hoping to do is to quell some of that, it's putting everything into quantifiable terms, that way we have an actual rulebook to go by, because what we had was a bit ambiguous, to say the least, so this will hopefully end some of that.
Could not say it any better.
I think we got the point on the pictures there.
Yeah. And this is just seeing, this is all over, this is north side, south side, uh, east and west of twenty-seven, it, it doesn't discriminate, it's, it's the entire city.
Yep, and, and what this doesn't really touch on, uh, but is probably at the heart of the issue, is this equates to tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of pickup cost, both in employee time, both in dumping fees, um, you know, it's really not fair to the other residents, because you have probably, you know, what, one to five percent of the population does this, and the others are, are just fine, so everyone else ends up having to pick up the tab for people who officially put these piles out by the road, so it's really not fair for everyone. This will hopefully.
We've got one place where, where, where every week, we're picking up anywhere from thirty to eighty scoops, every week this gentleman's running a business, and I mean, I've got pictures and Randy's witness, where the guy runs a tree business, brings it all there, dumps it, and we haul it off, because it's, it's a quarter of what he would pay.
Sure.
It's, it's every week, it's, it's, it's never empty there.
Yeah.
It's in several places, not just one, it's throughout places.
So in terms of enforcement, what would it look like with the new rules in place, a person puts a big pile like that out by the road, what would be the procedure?
Guess I'm sanitation rainy. Um, I think there were, uh, some, some items laid out there, and I think Jerry came up with some fines, some administrative costs. We certainly would have, uh, once the citations are back and from the, they're currently sitting at the print shop right now, being, uh, finished, so there's a citation off, we could do that, where your first one's a warning, second one's a hundred dollars, or fifty dollars, I think it is, and it goes into fifty-third.
Would this fall into the same procedures as regular code enforcement?
Yes.
So they would have to go to magistrate and.
It could, but it also, well, yeah, you, if we wrote the citation, it wouldn't go to magistrate, it would, you know, if they want to contest it, then it goes to county court, but, um, I think administrative fees, and I think there's a decision that the council would make that if the city does want to, um, assist with the pickup of this, this debris, that code enforcement would probably be utilized to go out, measure the pile, you guys come up with a, uh, an amount per cubic yard over and above what you're going to allow them to have, and then their, their water bill or whatever is then, uh, not leaned, but it would be added to their water bill to, uh, for payment each month.
The only, you know, judgment call would come into, I mean, this has been a problem on my own property, you get someone that just randomly dumps a pile of garbage on your, on your property, so you didn't do it, but somebody did it, so that would be the, the judgment of, I guess, code enforcement to make that call.
I believe so, and I believe, you know, person first and foremost, but normally, they would, they would object to, that's all theirs, and then we would, you know, hopefully go door to door and try to find out if it was somebody else that brought it there.
Yeah.
Majority of the time, it's going to be a neighbor or somebody down the street, there's not a lot of, there's a ton of illegal dumping in this city, but it's not the typical illegal dumping that you would find out in rural Highlands County, where they're taking it out where they don't want to be seen, people here, they just pull up to a hickin' lot, dump it, and away they go, and that's, the majority of the time, it's somebody down the street, though, it's not somebody coming from Avon Park Lakes to dump in the city limits, there's plenty places out there.
Unless it's tires.
Unless it's tires.
And they could be coming from Tampa, who knows?
Correct.
Okay, as council have questions on this ordinance?
I, I have one question on, on yard waste, um, there, if you're a homeowner and happen to have a, a lot of trees or front or hedges or something that you have to cut once or twice a year or something, and you have more than two cubic yards, which I would understand if, if that's kind of a, you know, waste that you have in your yard, you don't have a choice, is, would you particularly, doesn't it matter if they would put out two cubed, two cubic yards a week for, you know, a month or two, or would you rather have them put it out and make a phone call, and then pay upfront to get the rest of it taken up?
Let me answer that, let me answer that. Um, the way we wrote it up, then if you haven't had a chance to read the whole thing, I'll go through it, because it's, some like it and some don't, we put it in there, we're going to pick up garbage once a week instead of twice, then every other week will be yard waste, as you're talking about, Jim? And that has to be either in a bag or in a garbage can, where you can pick it up, dump it in the back of the truck, um, or it's got to be less than five feet long and five inches in diameter and tied up, so we can pick it up, and that's once every other week, it's the same way the county's doing, it's actually the same way Sebring's doing, except I think they're using their claw trucks. And then the following week, we'll pick up bulk items, not like Randy showed you there, and he told me he could go all day and get more photos, which I'm sure you know, but these are items that won't fit into your garbage can, you know, it could be a dresser, it could be a headboard or something like that, but again, two cubic feet, we would pick that up with a claw truck, and that, like, the county, actually, the county puts this out for any of us that live in unincorporated, depending on the color, it shows the week that what gets picked up, which is if we move that way, we will put that out, get it to the customer, so, and answer your question, it'd be every other week, and no, we wouldn't let you call and come pick it up, because that's what we're dealing with now, call, pick it up here, call, pick it up there, so then they're not running the route, they're running around picking up stuff, and personally, I think, once every other week for yard debris, you know, trimming your bushes and that is enough, if that answers your question.
No, well, I, I agree with that, I think every other week is fine, you know, except there's always exceptional cases too, storm, hurricane, whatever, but as far as the garbage pickup, I don't think that once a week is going to make it, and the reason why I say that is because when we first started with the carts that we had now, when we had a, a garbage cart and we had a recycle bin, that they were being filled with garbage, both of them, nonstop, and there was also the point where we actually had some people, you could have got a small cart instead of the, the bigger cart, well, I remember that one time we were going to just do that once a week, and it seemed like there was a lot of people who had garbage just overflowing, I, I, I don't think, now, for me, I'm different, because I'm just a family of two of us, and I could probably go once a week, I want one garbage cart, but people, a family of four, or five, or six, there's no way that they can do that, that one big garbage cart would not handle garbage for, for two weeks, and I, I've seen it in the past, I've seen, and some of the neighbors now that even, uh, try to make it once a week, and they're almost overflowing, so I, I disagree with picking up just regular garbage, uh, your garbage cart, whether the fifty gallons or whatever size, we call it sixty-four gallons, whatever it is, is not going to be sufficient, it has to be twice a week, and then that's, that's just my opinion.
I, I agree, I agree.
Yeah, so I, I raise the same concern, and, um, if you remember last time, whenever this, whenever we went to a one-day-a-week garbage pickup, the city did not allow anyone to have additional cans, so right now, our actual garbage pickup is, is it sixteen dollars? Is that what it's going to?
Fifteen.
Fifteen dollars, so basically, if you want to have two garbage can, can, but it would just be fifteen multiplied by two, if you want to have three, you have to be multiplied by three, so there's a way to get to the amount of garbage, regardless of how much you produce, you could have fourteen people in your family, and you could still get there, you would just have to pay extra for that, the only thing that does not get covered in this is just the fact that, if you'll remember, there was, uh, some complaints about, uh, smell, so, you know, we learned in Florida, especially in the summertime, after three days, that's whenever that gets produced, and that's whenever the different things start to smell, so that's the only thing that's not covered here, but what I would like to see is more or less the cost difference, and what it would save the city by going to this, um, you know, there's always a potential that if we keep on the same road that we're going on, you know, we may have to raise taxes in the future, so we need to be very sensitive about what our budget is going to be, so that's the only thing that's not covered here, is the actual budget part of everything. Perhaps the council would, uh, look at this a little close, more closely, if we had all those numbers, so that we could see what this would save, or potentially what we may have to raise taxes this year, if we don't do something like this.
I know my concern, because I, I do have a big family, so we would never be able to make it with one can, um, there's just no way, my concern is that families are not going to pay additional for additional cans, they're going to find other ways to dump it, and I feel like that would actually contribute to the mess that we see on the streets, or like in my case, our business is, you know, just a street away, and there are people who drive by in their trucks, and they dump their garbage in our dumpster.
Oh, yeah.
Because their can's already full, so I don't feel like they're going to be willing to, if it's not like a rate increase across the board, like maybe raise everyone's garbage by five dollars a month, um, I feel like they're going to try to find other ways to get rid of the garbage without having to pay for it.
I, I agree with that, Brendan, because I just, uh, it's like you said, we're getting garbage pickup twice a week, and we're already got problems with just garbage waste, not all the other stuff that we've talked about tonight, and I think that, uh, I, I don't want to see, uh, an increase in taxes this year, but if we had to increase, uh, our garbage rates, which I think our garbage and water rates, that's actually very low, I mean, I think that the, uh, the standard rate for garbage and water and sewer is somewhere around sixty-five dollars a month, something like that.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven, so, you know, if we, if we raise that five dollars a month, then, uh, then I, I wouldn't have a problem with that, and I think that's just the price of doing business, that, uh, yes, unfortunately, small families are going to have to pay for the people who have large families, but at the same time, I don't think we can sit there and, and say that we don't want, uh, people who have, uh, you know, some people have two families living in a household, or they have four kids, that to sit there and try to, uh, make them come up with a way to get rid of the waste, where once a week, isn't going to do it, and I can't see charging them strictly for an extra card of fourteen or fifteen dollars a month, uh, unfortunately, that's just the way I look at it, I think we have to be fair, at the same time, we have to be reasonable on how we're going to equate this, and I say, I don't care if we have a study to see where we do with the budget on that, but I, I'm looking at all options, it'll be fine, but, uh, that's one issue that I don't think we can do, because like you said, we tried it once before, and it just became a inhumane mess.
So there's a lot of parts to this, and it sounds to me like the only pushback is coming on the once-a-week garbage pickup versus the two, so I would ask the council, is there any other issues with the rest of it?
I have an issue when, um, Randy talked about the different piles, I, I want to know, um, exactly, I, I know Melody is not here, I'm more interested in what would the resident have to pay if we allowed them to put out more, and, and I say that because, let, let me explain, I, I'm coming from Hillsboro, over there for twenty-some years, and what they did was, they allow you to put it on the side of the road, but you know, you live in the suburbs, you didn't put that stuff on the side of the road, so I say that, that they let you go to the recycle center in your truck, and they had these big old bins, and they was all labeled, and you put, you came through the gate, and you showed your, um, your tax papers, and that's how they record, and how many times you grow, come through on a scale, and they weighed whatever you had, and you put them in, they had them sorted out, you put them in whatever you had, did action, what do you got, you name five things, bin four, bin three, bin two, bin one, you already know you got to put those stuff in it, bin.
Sure.
So I know this, this is Avon Park, I get it, but my biggest concern I have is, it's going to happen, and we're going to have to revisit this again, that when we start telling them that they can't put all this stuff on the side of the road, and like Mark said, we're not going to be taking all these calls, running here and running there, you may not take the calls to run here and run there to pick up a pile, but somebody is going to be running somewhere, picking up piles, people are now dumping.
Yeah, so.
Illegally.
With this, and currently, they can dump whatever they want, it's just that there's a fee associated with, so I guess, uh, maybe for an example, this limits it to two cubic yards, so if they put out five cubic yards, what would the fee be?
That's four dollars a sheet.
I think currently, they're charging, again, I'm code enforcement, but I believe they're, uh, from what I understand, it's ten dollars an extra cubic yard.
Ten dollars per yard?
I'm sorry?
Ten dollars per yard?
Over and above four.
Okay, so that's.
That's what I understand, but they also go by scoops, and I'm not sure what a scoop is, but, um, it's also kind of the vernacular that's being used currently, and again, that's, that's no way, I can't defend it, like I said before, scoop, when I go in front of code enforcement board, and I'm like, well, they owe us three scoops, well, what does that mean?
And add the if every time to charge, because this is so out of hand, and we get so many complaints, especially out at solid waste sanitation, but they're just picking things up, because they're getting tired of people yelling at them, because they, some people think you can throw anything out, and the city is supposed to pick it up, and I'm here tonight, twice a week, whatever, I told Rick, we're not going to, we, we're not the decision makers, you are, you want it, I can tell you, there's going to be an extra cost, because we cannot keep up right now, what we're running, but with that said, you know, I hear what everybody's saying, but there's going to be changes, and people are going to have to understand that, there's going to be rules, just like in unincorporated, people abide, or at first, they didn't want, again, that, that, we used to get two days a week, we're not, I know you're going to, you know, stay in two weeks, or two days a week, that's fine, but when you put your garbage can out, it can, it's, right now, they put their garbage can out and say, well, we don't want to charge you more money, but they're putting bags, the guy's got to get off and pick them up, well, when the truck comes, it's one employee, and next year, if we need another truck, we're going to ask for another one, just one employee, all they're picking up is a garbage can, those bags can lay there, and then code enforcement get called, you know, and that's what, again, I, I refer back unincorporated, that's what county does, if somebody leaves bags out there, or if your garbage can is overflowing, they drive right by it, because you're supposed to abide by rules. Sure. And right now, if you want us to go around and pick up all this stuff, we're probably going to need, they made a mistake the last time they bought a clam truck, I've been told by the guy that drives the clam truck, they bought a small one, so that's more runs, you get half the amount of, of the garbage in it, and you got to go all the way out to the landfill, well, fuel's pretty expensive right now, we're making all these runs, and again, that's another thing with the two days a week and that stuff, but I, I just want to reiterate, doesn't, we want rules, but then we don't want to, when we make them, people have to abide by them, and they're not now, we're picking up stuff, we shouldn't be picking up now, and there's people that probably aren't being charged, because our guys are just so tired of being yelled and screamed at, to pick this stuff up, all you do is let it lay around, I had code enforcement go out, Randy and his troops, and I said I wanted the top twenty sites where we've got stuff that's been laying there for a month, and I got with Rick, and I said, that's it, Rick, get the guy in clam truck and go pick it up, and they did, what, nine, seventy percent the first day, and one of the, one of it, my tie, once code enforcement officer said, the next day after we picked it up, they had thrown more stuff out there, you know, just expecting us to pick it up, so, hey, you're the ones that make decisions, I'm just letting you know that what we put in here, we intend to file, and this resolution, we talked about how much we're charged, and I can tell you, back in twenty thirteen, it was eighteen dollars, and then in that year, it went down to sixteen, and now we're fifteen, so we went down, we didn't go up in the garbage. Right. I would just simply say that for the fees of all of the yard waste and for the trash, not the garbage itself, you know, make the fee triple, whatever the cost is for the city, by the time you add in the labor, the wear and tear on the vehicle, et cetera, et cetera, make it triple that, that it would be cheaper for them to take it themselves to the dump, or to call someone, and call a service, a private service to collect it, that way, we still have a means of getting it collected, if they do want to use the city to collect it, because it's more convenient or whatever, the city benefits from it, so that way, we're not, it's not a tax burden, it's actually a benefit, and it would also encourage them to use other means, is that. I would agree with that, as long as we had the first. I see. Do you think, I mean, don't you think it would cut down quite a bit if we're charging in excess of what it would cost for them to do it themselves? Um, I couldn't.
They're just going to keep dumping on empty lots and things of that nature, like they're.
I, I was just going to say that.
It's just the same, you're doing the same thing, you're just charging a higher fee, still pushing them over here, is what they're going to end up doing.
It may promote a lot of, um, illegal dumping outside of those city limits, too.
Well, unless you're just picking up everything cart wants, it's always going to be that way, so.
There's always going to, there's always going to be people that, they're going to avoid the rules and break the law, because that's littering, and, uh, it's actually a crime, it depends on how much it is.
Right.
So you're, you know, there's no way you can avoid that, you know, you should set the rates, whatever you want, by the service that you want to have, and understand that he's going to increase the budget for whatever you decide.
Sure.
So whenever there's a situation like you're, you're describing, the clam truck goes and picks it up, does somebody ever call the, um, the owner and tell them, look, you can't throw all this, you can't, have, has anybody ever stopped to explain it to them, maybe they don't know any better, because the truck picks it up all the time? And my question is.
Hold on, let, let him answer the question before we ask another question.
Well, currently, we're charging ten dollars, so they just go ahead and pay it, and it's cheaper, I just, one gentleman I was telling you about, you know, eighty scoops, you know, it's cheaper for him to pay the city to haul it off than it is for him himself, with his business, to go dump it.
Right.
So that's the current problem right now, so, yes, they know, they don't care, or when they do get caught, then they come out and scream and cuss at our drivers, and call the city manager, uh, directly, and, and want reports done on how our garbage zone talked to them, when in fact, the guy found it something wrong with what he did, it's actually the customer, so.
But.
It gets, it gets pretty crazy out there.
To answer Shelley's, yes, I would agree, if they're law-abiding citizens who don't know, but we deal with a lot of people, they don't care, they're just going to continue to throw this stuff out there, to me, we set the rules, we enforce the rules, we come up with what it's going to cost to pick it up, but to, it, it's coming down to code enforcement, because there needs to be some criminal charges on these people, especially these people who are operating businesses out of the back of their house, or they're doing work in the county, and they're dropping it there, and he brings one up, there was a complainant here, and, um, our guy caught him right-handed dropping it off, as he's pulling up and screaming and hollering, and who I am, and this and that, and it ended up by signing an investigation, but our guy did nothing wrong, doing his job, that's, and I only hear a bit, these guys here, but all the time, and when they don't hear what they want from them, then I get the call. Sure. So. And to offset some of the costs of more code enforcement, if we're collecting much higher fees, that would help out with that, right? It would. And, and with the, you know, what you said, yes, I mean, the higher fees need to be there, but the ones that continue to abuse it. It would. And, and with the, you know, what you said, yes, I mean, the higher fees need to be there, but the ones that continue to abuse it. We need to take as much legal action as we can on.
I'm not saying don't.
No, I know you are, I'm just explaining the, you know, it, it's a good conversation on what's going on out here, and I think we all want to make a difference. Because it's, it makes the city look really bad, but right now, we can't keep up.
Sure. Ms. Taylor, Ms. Taylor, do you have a question?
So are their residents really paying when they put that on the side of the road? Are they really paying?
Well, it goes on their water bill, whether they're paying, I don't know. Some of them pay if they want to keep the water.
So if they don't pay it, and it bills up and bills up, their water can be turned off?
Yes, not, not can it, will be.
They're either gonna pay or they'll have to move out.
Can't move in place without water.
And we turn it off a lot because they can't pay it? We do a lot of turning off?
We have a lot of turnovers, people can't pay.
No, not just they can't pay their bill, because the, the, the bulk has been placed on the side of the road and we're charged.
Yes, how many, I don't know, I mean, Marnie'd have to work that up for me on how many just don't pay their water bill, which is a lot. But yes, the fees get put on their bill. I mean, it, it comes down to this stuff can't be free, the city, and if you want it all to be free, then I probably, we probably wouldn't need. Fifteen more people, we'd have to run seven days a week, two, two shifts a day to keep up with what we've got out there. And we want the city to look good, and there needs to be rules, and people need to follow them, and if they don't, they need to help the town.
I'm all for charging what we need to charge to make it stop.
Well, you know, the other thing nobody realizes is when you mix all your garbage together, and they gotta go out to the clam shell and separate it, because we can't dump it. At the dump, mixed.
Well, just count it all, count it all as waste and.
Charge them a fee appropriate.
Yeah, same difference, if you go out to the landfill, if you have C and D, it costs half as much as if you go to the hill. Or if you have, you know, all concrete, you could dump it for free. So there's gotta be different delineation there, right?
Well, but under the new one, if you end up passing this, we're not picking up C and D.
At all.
No, you, if you want C and D material, or you want great big bulk stuff, you get a rollup, we're not picking all of that up. White, the, the white.
White goods.
Goods, thank you, for goods. The white good, you get two a year, and it can't be two of the same thing. So you want to put out a refrigerator and then a range or stove, you can do that, that's it, other than that, you cart them off, face them and cart them off.
Does that require a phone call?
Yes, that, that will be the call up and tell us, and then we'll put it on the list and pick them up.
Yeah, that's the only way, that's the only way you can track that, is a, is a call-in pickup, other than that, you can't expect the driver to write all that down.
And the same thing with tires, Rick was against, we shouldn't pick any up, I was too, but I saw the county try that, and they gave in. I think it's four or six year, and we put in four a year. You know, most of us don't have tires laying around our house, but a lot of people do. And that picture Randy shows it, I mean, that's ridiculous, we should drive by that, why pick them up? We have to pick tires up by themselves, right, Rick?
Yeah, tires, tires have to be picked up separately, you can't take them period with other garbage, so. Randy volunteered today with pick the tires up, and we would do it by.
Yeah, point, yeah, we, there's a lot going on in code enforcement, but I mean, we all have trucks, and that is one advantage, so.
A resident take tires out to dump themselves?
Yes. Good luck trying to get them to do that, but yeah, because think of how much money it's costing them to take those out there, dump them, and the gas. When I can just throw them on the lot next door and know we'll pick them up.
I mean, I actually just went out last weekend and took a bunch of mostly empty paint cans out there. And they told me where to drop them off, and there was no charge, and they were very nice about it. And I had, I had no problem doing that, their, their paint pipe wasn't any good, it probably five years old anyways. But I, I do agree, I think we need to start charging the ones that are basically the, the big offenders now. Say if somebody has yard waste, and say they only have yard waste four times a year, and let's say it happens to be three cubic yards. And that, that's like a judgment call, if you had to charge extra for that cubic yard, that's not a problem. I think the biggest problem is probably the, the, probably called the junk, or even some of the white things. Because that, those things, you can't expect, one, the garbage truck to take it, and two, really a clam truck, that makes it too, too difficult. I was actually at a meeting today, and several residents actually said that was one of the biggest things they had about Avon Park. Was the amount of trash that's thrown out in the street all over the place, as well as the fact that when people do leave those excess of trash out there. And a storm comes up, and then it goes flying down the streets, and then the whole neighborhood is full of it. And if, if you got a house on a corner, then that's usually where it ends up. So I, I'm definitely for charging the big offenders, and I think we have to be careful with somebody who just makes. Either occasional mistake or charge of a minimum amount, that's fine, but the, I, I, it's the regular offenders and the big offenders, we have to do something about. And I don't mind charging them, whatever is reasonable or more than reasonable, to get the point across.
So.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So can someone tell me the procedure, you know, for the ones that's paying? The truck goes out, and they write their name down on this address, and they take it back to the city with them at the end of the day? How does that work? How the procedure work where we, when we see the pile and they're, they being charged?
Well, the driver will call their, their supervisor, which. Or they'll call code enforcement to investigate it, and code enforcement will go out at some time and say, oh, that's for the two yard, okay, so then, I don't know how you take care of that point. But if they call the supervisor, then the supervisor lets them know, that's a good, talks to the homeowner, makes, makes contact with homeowner. Lets them aware of what it's gonna cost them, you know, ten dollars a yard, and then he goes downtown, has her generate a work order. Which now is Karen, so it's changed, but Karen would generate a work order, it would be signed, and it goes back to billing, and billing would generate a bill for their water bill.
And, and, and do the homeowner, do they usually complain when they see this deal? Or were they told when he went out there to pick that pile up?
That I don't know, I don't work in billing, so I couldn't tell you.
Yes, a lot of them complained, it shouldn't be billed, but see, here we go, again, I mean, it's a good question, you got what we're doing now, but that stuff should end. You get two cubic feet of bulk material every other week, you get two cubic feet of. Of yard debris every other week, and that's it. You should, we, after this is in, and hopefully within six months, people understand, we're not gonna pick all this stuff up. Get yourself a rollup, type, you know, whatever you gotta do, you, you know, in here, if you want. Uh, uh, someone who's evict somebody or whatever, well, that's for them to take the stuff and take it out to the dump and pay the dump.
Yeah.
So what you're saying is, you know, understanding what's going on, but what we're saying is it's got to stop. And it may take a good six months for them to come to understand, maybe if they, everybody starts seeing the city look nice in the garbage, maybe they'll. Then maybe we can get them to mow their right away, you know, who knows, might all go into one, so.
You're talking crazy now.
Yeah, I am, but you know, hey, we gotta.
So just wanted to point out also that we don't, we, we also don't pick up the.
Hazardous.
Yard, yard waste, it's large, a bulk yard waste, that's, that's cut by private contractors. And, you know, because they, they should haul that off as part of their job, so I just wanted to make sure it's clear on that.
But just, just so you know, just to get a rough idea, a lot of people are like, two cubic yards, what is that? Think of a bed of a pickup truck, and roughly right to the top of the bed rail, that's two cubic yards.
Okay.
So that, that's a lot every two weeks, I don't know what kind of stuff you're generating in your house to put out there, but that's really pretty.
Yeah.
That's, you, you, that's, that's a lot, so times that by, what, twenty-six, fifty-two weeks in a year. Twenty-six would be by monthly, that's twenty-six times two, that's fifty-two cubic yards of waste over and above your traffic. Where your trash that, you know, you get out of your refrigerator, that's a lot of waste.
Sure, yes, it's hard, hard to believe a residential without get issue.
Sure. So there's only two ways of doing it, one is to pick up everything and charge a great amount of money for it, or to do it this way, and so this is one option. I'm willing to give it a shot, see how it works out, if it doesn't work out, we'll do something different. Obviously, the only pushback that we've gotten so far was with the, sticking with the two days a week garbage pickup rather than the one. But other than that, does anybody else want to make any changes to this?
Well, I do think one thing we need to do is to maybe put a notice out there, and that may include putting the mail out list. Because you can't put something, a small paragraph in the water bill, because people don't look at that, there's not enough space to put all this information. I don't know whether it's something we have to put in the budget to put out there, you know, starting the, at the next coming year. That the store will be fined, and send somebody a list of it, but I think that it's only fair if we let the people know, people don't get the newspaper anymore.
We, we talked about a brochure.
Yeah, I can tell you, again, I've mentioned Charlotte County numerous times in here, but that's where I came from prior to being here. And I know it's not apples to apples, but they went through this, they did the same thing that we're looking at doing right now. They hired a firm, cost them probably twenty thousand dollars, and they went door to door. And they put hangers, or they talked to each resident, they had, they did PSAs, they did it on their website, they did stuff on TV and Wink, they did. And then they had like a grace period, they gave them basically three months to come into, after the big push was out, they gave them three months to come into. Compliance, or after that, they gave them a date, kind of like a drop dead date. The only, the only issue with that too is we have winter residents. So if we did a push and you, you went this, this went through in July, we'd have to do it again come November or so. Because those people coming from up north aren't gonna know anything about what happened now.
It's gonna take some time, I noticed when I was walking the dog the other day, that people would pick up our, our solid waste. They put a, a big sticker on their, on their recycle can and said, no garbage in recycle. You know, and actually wrote under it, gross, underlined, but, but, you know, that's the sort of thing that also educates them is, you know, when they get. Told, you know, we're not picking up this week for you because you mixed your garbage.
Well, I can tell you, the county does that right now, here, I, I mean, the, the county will leave a nasty gram on your, your, they won't pick it up. They drive right, I live out in the county, they, they drive right past it, if you have something out there that's not supposed to be out there, you're not getting it picked up.
But you, you can put that, that stick, you know, it's like you had to have a backing, a sticker type thing stuck to the can, the top of the can, they can remove it. But at least they, they have to look at it and want to remove it, it's a bright yellow, so they couldn't miss it.
Okay. All right, does anybody have any other changes?
I have a change, it's not as important as what we were just talking about, but is there any way that we can change? And, and you guys can tell me, no, that's silly, but that's fine. Garbage cart. Is there any way we can say can or receptacle?
Doesn't matter.
I mean, no, not really, but it kinda sounds better to me.
I, I used cart because they have wheels on them, and so that, to me, is more of a cart than it is a can. Cans, I generally see us.
I mean, I guess if you're not familiar.
I think they're actually referred to by the manufacturer's carts as well.
They're carts with wheels and cans without, yes, they throw a cart, they, they cart from the garbage down.
They are, and actually I have one from Sebring here, because before I came over, I had a clerk print it out, they call them carts too. By the way, Sebring still picks up two days a week, they use the, they have two of the one employee trucks that just with arms pick it up.
It's a cart or a can with wheels?
They call them carts.
All right, anything else?
I'm, I, I got something small, they talk about lost carts, they didn't say anything about stolen. I don't, I don't think a person should have to go and pay for a cart if someone came on their property and stole it, but, I mean.
Report it to the sheriff's department.
So you, someone come and steal your car in order to get another, the city of Avon Park go charged and bring out another.
If somebody came and stole your car, wouldn't it be the same thing?
No, we're talking car and a cart.
Somebody came and stole your skateboard, wouldn't it be the same thing?
So if we.
Is that, is that not the same thing?
No, it's not.
Okay, so if they, if they did get their thing stolen, their garbage can stolen, and they brought their police report to the city. Would the city be willing to waive the fee for replacement?
I would say yes, I mean, when I was going through this an hour ago, highlight some things that I knew would come up tonight. I saw that, I kind of paused on the stolen too, but also is.
We, we, we have, we have in the past.
Right, but let me finish with it, with Darren sitting back, there's a lot of people lie. But you know, if they want to go make a sheriff's office report and risk getting charged and making a false report, then I don't see why we wouldn't.
I mean, right, but you're not gonna replace it unless they make sheriff's.
Correct.
Right.
Don't call nine one one.
Anything else? Okay. We're sticking with two days a week garbage pickup, it sounds like.
So would you like me to redo this and bring it back to the mixed bean?
That sounds like a fantastic idea.
I will do that, I wonder when you want to try and read it, should I give all the changes and so on, but I think that'd be difficult to do.
Okay. Jerry will make the, discuss changes and bring it back before it's at our next meeting. Anything else on this matter?
Just one thing I want to add, I actually told the mayor earlier, we talked to him, but Anthony Lovett, our supervisor of sanitation. He resigned for personal matters on Sunday, so we'll be looking to fill that position, okay?
When is his last day?
Sunday.
Sunday?
All right, we're moving on.
Yeah.
Yep, if you want to know more details, talk to the city manager privately. Item number six, we have the approval of the excavation point in quotes for paving overlay of five city streets. Who wants to take it?
I'll start this, and I'll give it to Rick, David Roberts is actually on vacation.
Okay.
When they gave this to me, they had put it in there so I could sign off on the ones within my limit. And I said, well, I'm just gonna put all five of them in front of you, two of them you had to approve anyways, you might as well look at all of them in case you had a question on it. We still are gonna pay some, or other roads, because we still have some money, but these were the, the top five priority lists on the list he had. And any other questions on why it was chosen or whatever, Rick may be able to.
We have any questions for them? Anything you want to say?
No, I mean, I, I think you all live here, been down these roads, I mean, you've got grass growing up in them, you know, chunks missing out on. Driveway entries broken off, I mean, they're just, they're just rough shaped roads, I mean, you got cobwebs to go all the way down the road. I mean, like I said, with grass growing up, I think. So, to me, what Dave's looked for is, is, is what, is a road that does need to be repaved.
Okay.
And, okay, you had something?
Sure.
Just so you know, we did apply for a grant that if we get it's worth about sixty thousand dollars, where we can hire an engineer. Who will come out and look at every one of our roads and conditions and put them from one to a hundred or whatever. Not only will it, when we bring it to you, say, hey, this was an engineer looked at it, but also helps us to get grants to help us repay some of these roads. That would be excellent.
That'd be a great idea, we need that very bad.
More of a scientific approach, we can apply the better. All right, does anyone care to make a motion? Oh, we got a question out there. Name and address in the microphone.
Eric Wilson, fourteen forty-five South Carolina Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Under approved excavation, this. You all had a request to pave a road. And I'm not sure if this is part of it, but you had a request to pave the road. And, and, and over by our property near Palmer, is that part of it? You know, I, I know you had.
Are you talking about the easement that runs? No, that's an easement, that's not a road, we're not paving that.
You're not paving that at all?
No.
What area are we talking about? Palmer and what?
Palmer and Lakeview.
That's the easement we got from, or we didn't get it, but Pablo.
Yeah, and my understanding was that you were gonna pave that.
I don't know who told you that, Eric, but no.
Okay. So in any regard, it's obviously not part of this group here.
Okay, all right, well, I'm, I need to put that back on you.
You're welcome to do so. All right. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve item number D six for like excavation point to overlay those five streets.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number seven, code enforcement issue eight oh three North Delaney Avenue.
Go ahead. Well, it was more of an update, I was gonna, I sent in, I believe you have a picture of the. Eight oh three North Delaney, this is as of this morning. The only reason this left side was taken, because the right side of the residents is pretty much complied. But as you see, it's kind of tough to see with this boat back in there, but there's still a large amount of, of garbage behind the boat. And on the porch, so that's the current state.
Okay.
Of eight oh three North Delaney.
Okay, so we had filed something on this property, correct?
We have a run and lien on this property, yes, code enforcement does.
But we have. But we haven't filed any other action here.
No, no. No, in fact, caught because she was on vacation. She came back and I told her to hold off on it based on what he told me.
Okay, well, any any regard, the purpose here is to bring the property into compliance, and it looks like we are at least making some progress, so.
There is uh progress, yes.
It's going in the right direction, right?
It it stalled uh about the last week, but prior to that, it was going very good, but then I'm not sure what happened after that.
We'll see how it progresses as we go through the process. But any questions on this property?
For the record, there's still a hundred dollar fine in Caroon each day.
Each day. So so eventually, the the fine situation is gonna be brought up before us. And the owner is either gonna have to make a decision, and we're gonna have to make a decision what he's gonna have to pay or not.
I think that one by the wayside with the unable to foreclose on the property, and that's really the only recourse, I believe, that's left on the table. And I think Jerry will find on that.
All right, thank you. Anything else on the item number seven? Seeing none. Moving on, any attorney updates, Jerry?
Yeah, I've got an ordinance proposed um sitting on your desk. I'll just hand it to you.
Okay.
I had a request to um look at the possibility of regulating sexually oriented businesses. I looked at the county's ordinance and it looked pretty good to me. I haven't been able to uh detail it. But um I did put this together for our meeting tonight. You wanted to consider reading it. I just have one change. Um under section one, you had C enforcement, but may be effectuated by county sheriff's office or city code enforcement. Um so um basically, what the law in Florida is, is that the uh county ordinances can apply within the city unless the city rejects them. In in a non-charter city, you don't have a choice in a charter charter county. But in a in a non-charter county like Highlands County, it would apply within the city if um we don't reject it and we're basically incorporating it here. Um obviously, it's gonna require some um administrative discussions between county and and um sheriff's office and so on, but uh this um allows that ordinance to be uh used within our city limits.
Yeah. Yeah, so uh it came to my attention that there was uh some sexually explicit business activity within the county uh that had been going on recently. Uh we didn't have adequate restrictions on the books, so this was a effort to go ahead and mirror what the county has passed um to restrict those businesses until we have time to go through and either stick with this or write something of our own. Is there any questions?
Has the county already restricted that? Because there's been a lot of that information in the newspaper.
The county did, but this and this is from the county, which was passed some time ago, that that you're speaking about happening inside the city limits of Sebring. Uh so this didn't apply to that.
Okay.
So.
I got you.
Anything else?
Uh we need an ordinance number for this. If we're gonna if you're gonna read it tonight.
Okay. Can we simply assign a number or do we have ten dash twenty twenty two? Jerry, if you'll go ahead and read that into the record.
I want it to the city of Avon Park, Florida, adopting Highlands County Article four, how you get Allen's County Code, Article four sexually oriented businesses for enforcement within the city of Avon Park. Providing for codification, repeal conflicting codes, ordinances, and resolutions, providing for several provisions and providing effective date.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll just include the change that I made adding item seats of section one.
So moved. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any questions? If not, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Anything else, Jerry?
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Item number eight is for discussion. You have before you the Unified Land Development Code Article eight. This is for the planning and zone planning and zoning board selection. It's come to my attention that uh there's been a lot of discussion about the zoning board. Uh currently, the requirements to be on the zoning board says each member of the planning and zoning board shall reside or be a property owner in the city. So obviously, in order to be a council member, you have to reside inside the city limits of Avon Park for a year. This, you have to reside inside the city limits or be a property owner. So in terms of zoning, if you think about what the zoning board is actually doing, the vast majority of zoning is either gonna be a large scale uh living development similar to what we've uh recently seen on the northeast part of Avon Park or more often than not, it's gonna be business related. So I think that the weak point in Avon Park has always been business development. So it would be my intention to add as many uh smart minded entrepreneurs as possible uh to this zoning board, so someone just simply owning a lot inside of Avon Park, you know, you can go buy the cheapest lot you can find, might be, you know, two or three thousand dollars. Does that really qualify you to sit on the zoning board? Does that somehow give you any skill or even any knowledge, you know, about the 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 local market here? I don't really think so. You know, obviously, living here does because you live here, this is your home, you're gonna know, you know, what's going on here and there. But even that doesn't necessarily equip you to make, you know, business decisions. That just means that you live here and you know what you like. So it would be my intention that if the council wants to stick with being able to live here or on a property here, that we would then add it to own a business. And the reason why that is is because we do have a lot of business owners that they have a business inside the city limits of Avon Park, but they don't live here when they lease their building. That's actually a lot more common than I would have ever thought. But um I think that someone who is uh opening businesses here or actively engaged in business is probably gonna know a lot more about the business climate in Avon Park than someone who just simply owns a lot. So I brought this up for discussion to hear what the rest of the council.
Well, I do agree with that. I know that the CRA uh allows that right now as we speak. And uh I just don't know whether there's any openings then if we were to move forward with this, that somebody would take a place.
It's not necessarily for this right this moment. It's more for the ongoing, yeah. And there are openings, by the way.
So Mayor, let me ask you this question. Um
Yes.
Residents of Avon Park Lakes Estates, they're not.
That's not the city limits.
They're not in the city limits. So you telling me what? They couldn't sit on the board?
No.
What?
No, they they can't. No. If you don't live inside the actual city limits, even though your address might say Avon Park, it's not the city limits unless it, you know, it actually is. Or if they own a property inside the city, so you could own a house, you could own a lot, you could own, you know, something like that. You have to either live here or own a property here currently to sit on the zoning board. I'm just simply looking at expanding that to living here, owning property here, or owning a business.
No, I mean, just because they're not in the city limits, that don't mean they don't care about the city of Avon Park.
I I think you're misunderstanding what I'm saying. This is actually making it more inclusive. So if you own a business here at one oh one Main Street, right? Right downtown. If you don't live here inside the city limits or own the property, but yet your business is here, business could be worth a hundred million dollars, but it doesn't matter. If you don't actually own the property, you just lease it and you don't actually live inside the city limits and live in Avon Park Lakes, you can't sit on it. And I'm simply wanting to expand it so that you could.
I agree. Okay, I got a better understanding. I agree.
Any other questions or concerns?
Uh have you talked to Jeff or somebody that's such for regional council about this?
I did.
Okay.
You told me to get with him. He told me to get with you, so I missed. No, he um he did say, I I knew he was gonna say that. But he said he he goes, I don't believe so, Mark. Council can do what they want, but then he looked up, it's one sixty three, I think.
I was gonna say, if he did do that, that's what I could.
Yeah, he did. And he said, no, there's nothing in there to preclude them from doing that.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea, especially because even the people that own lots, we just had a couple of recent situations where people bought lots for a few hundred dollars and it's like then they can sit on the board. I mean, the I think that a a person who's invested, you know, a lot of money into a business, you know, I think that they should be allowed to be on it. I had no problem with that at all.
Yeah, I would agree.
Now, we have, I'll be having to make that motion.
Uh do we have to? How exactly will we change this? Would this be an ordinance or?
It'd be an ordinance through CFRPC, and it says gotta go planning zoning board too.
Okay.
Because it's it's changing the um the land development code.
Okay.
You're in Ed.
No, I think that's which is right.
Okay, so we'll move forward and we'll go ahead and instruct Jeff to write that up and take it through the process.
Uh Mayor, since we own this zoning and planning thing.
Yes.
I I had a question. Um it it goes back and forth and it talks about the different alternates. But one time, um when Ms. Blake came up on the alternate list and we was trying to make a determination what we were gonna do with her. I didn't see anything in here in regards to I I read all of it about, you know, um the first alternate, if so many members are not present, they get to vote what. It seems to me that if whether it's Ms. Blake or whether it's anybody, they go into the meetings, they getting all the information. How long do must they sit there before they get the opportunity to be able to vote?
If there's a person missing, they can vote that night.
Right.
Yeah, so.
I think it was five or less than the first alternate gets to vote. Five or less, as I read it, five or less member that's present. The first alternate gets to participate and vote.
Mm hmm.
So I I guess I guess it makes a a second alternate. What's the purpose of me coming on here to be a se- second alternate? I get to listen what everybody got to say, but my vote ain't gonna never matter unless, you know.
Other people don't show up.
Yeah.
That's the purpose of an alternate, though.
I mean, why have a second alternate then?
I I agree with you. I don't think I don't think that we should personally even have alternates. I think that we should pick people who are gonna show up, period. And if they don't show up, we don't keep them on the board.
All right, we don't have no alternative to sit down.
Yeah, and Mayor, that is the problem sometimes because the ones that aren't alternates, we we're always fighting to make sure we have a quorum.
Right. Yeah, no, I think we need to do a lot better job at picking uh all of our board members. And we need to make sure that they're actually serious about it. I think that, you know, in past history, we tend to take the mindset that we are pleading for people to be on boards, and I think that we need to be more proactive in picking out good people that are going to actually care and take an interest in what's going on. People don't really understand how much these boards mean, and they mean a lot. You know, there there are some boards that probably have a lot more power than others, but the zoning board in particular is a a very important board. Other than the city council, that is the most powerful board.
All right. Item number nine, regular city manager updates. The Board of County Commissioners, you got the fact I put they approved the the road jurisdiction transfer on South Lake Boulevard. So that's done. That's now the city road. And she got the recorded copy today. She just whispered to. Um the FAA due diligence grant was submitted last week. It's in DC and it took a lot to get it there. Basically, it took DC, we believe, calling downtown to get it done because once they did that, they actually got with us. We worked together, got it done. Again, with old help on the narrative, but it's up there. And Bart, who's the manager, he's actually on vacation this week, but he gave me his, one of his assistant managers, if we need him. And when they find here back from DC, which DC has said, yes, there is money there. Um I'll certainly let y'all know, but it's it's going pretty good with the, at least it's in DC. Um second story windows for which was what, probably eight or nine months ago? They're supposed to be in, they're in, I think, this week and they're gonna start in the next two weeks putting them in.
Nice.
So well needed.
Okay, anything else?
Um I think that's it. Any staffs got anything? I would, you know, look down there. I I gotta give kudos to Rick. This guy is probably one of the hardest working guys I've ever had the pleasure to work with. He's taken on more than he can handle. And now with Anthony gone, he's even got that. I was out there today with him and um he just keeps taking it on. He'll tell you he's overwhelmed, but he gets things done and the city couldn't have a a better guy than him sitting there and, you know, Randy saying, say something about me, but I know Randy to, no, Randy has um offered his code enforcement guy to help drive clam truck. Randy's offered and has actually been out there with a rake raking up for these illegal dumps. And he told me again this morning, whatever they can do to help with sanitation being down, so two great guys do a great job. And then again, Rick is doing an outstanding job out there and, you know, without a I can't even say just director. It's more of a the this city engineer we need because Rick knows enough about all the business out there, but I told David, if that guy leaves, I don't know what the heck I'm gonna do because he he does do that much. We got a lot of good employees in the city, but tonight's for Rick because uh he goes beyond above and beyond twenty four hours a day anytime I get ahold of him, so appreciate it.
I'll second that, Rick. You get it done, brother. I appreciate everything you do.
Great.
That concludes our regular agendas. Or anything else we could say?
Um I just have a question. I just wanted to know what positions we still have available. I haven't been able to come down and board or anything.
I didn't hear the last.
The positions that are still available.
David.
I know we had, you said the sanitation manager.
Yeah, we now now have the sanitation manager. We have the public works director. We have the budget manager. Um we're still interviewing on and off and potential candidates. We have one opening left on the streets, equipment operator. Um we have a collections and delivery technician and a wastewater treatment plan operator.
And I suspect you're gonna have some solid waste additions here soon.
Yep, and all these positions are advertised on the website currently.
Yes, they are.
Okay. So anybody interested can go there and take a look at it. Anything else we could say? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing the opposition, we are adjourned.
Thank you very much.